This hearing by the, uh, public hearing conducted by the Committee on Appropriations and Judication will come back to order. We have three items on this afternoon's agenda. Bill forty-nine, fifty, and fifty-two. We'll begin with Bill forty-nine, and I'll allow the, uh, author to make a short statement.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Vice Speaker, Mr. Chairman, for having a public hearing on this particular legislation. It's pretty straightforward. It would allocate the balance of funds that were previously appropriated to the Guam Police Department specifically for vehicles and for radios for the vehicles, and there's a balance of under, slightly under ten thousand dollars that they're requesting that they be utilized for, specifically for handheld radios. So, this legislation would appropriate that remaining balance specifically for that purpose. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator. We have three individuals that have signed up: Chief Bredalio, Mr. Tenorio, and Mr. Charclaff. I'm sorry, I don't know your, uh, rank, and I don't want to insult you by calling you by the wrong title, so I'll just say Mr. -- I know, that's why I don't want to do it again. Major, okay. Okay. Please, Fred.
Good evening, uh, Vice Speaker BJ Cruz, Senator Tommy Morrison, Senator Dennis Rodriguez, Senator Rory Ruschfischer, again Senator Frank Uggan Jr., and Senator Tony Ada. Thank you for providing us the opportunity to testify in support of this bill that is an act to appropriate the sum of nine thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-six cents. It's the balance from the obligated balance of funds pursuant to public law thirty-two dash two-two-five to the Guam Police Department to purchase handheld portable radios and accessories for law enforcement officers, of course, myself, and I support, as chief of police for Bredalio, for the Guam Police Department, I support receiving the nine thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-six cents to purchase the portable radios, two handheld portable radios, and it's also gonna, as the legislation indicates, it also will include a spare battery, battery charger, speaker, microphone, and earpiece for each radio and, and accessories. I'd just like to say that I also spoke with our interoperable communications person, Brad Hokinson, and the two radios, the, these type of radios, it's an ATX six thousand, and they run to cost about four thousand nine hundred and sixty-five point thirty-three apiece, so this is, this money will be spent on those two ATX six thousand Motorola radios.
Thank you. Did you want to add anything, Major?
Yes, good afternoon, uh, Vice Speaker Cruz and members of the legislature. My name is Major Fred M. Charclaff. I'm the bureau chief for the Guam Police Department, and as the overseer of both the finances as well as the vehicle fleet, um, just like, you know, the chief mentioned earlier, I am also in full support of this. You know, other than, you know, our firearms that we issue to our personnel, you know, the radio communications, both in the vehicle as well as the handheld, which is what we're gonna purchase, is probably one of the most vital pieces of equipment in terms of, you know, um, executing our mandate, which is to save lives. That radio can make a difference between, you know, the, the safety of the officer, but more importantly, you know, saving a life, you know, and protecting the citizens of our island. So, again, this money, although it's, it's, uh, miniscule, and it might be a drop in the bucket in terms of our overall budget, but in terms of our mandate, which is to save lives, um, this is very, it's one of the very critical, uh, equipment, pieces of equipment that we issue to our officers. So, again, I'm in full support of it, and look forward to hopefully getting this money so that I can get our finance folks and our fleet folks to purchase it and then issue it out to our officers. Thank you.
Howfade, Mr. Chairman. My name is Joshua Tenorio, the Administrator of the Courts. Normally, I do not testify for, um, legislation that doesn't directly impact the court, but of course, in this case, the police is one of our closest partners, and we're supportive of this need. I, I wanted to take the opportunity to bring to your attention that, um, next year, I believe it's next year, when Motorola is changing the platform, and so all these radios are required for all the first responders. Um, there's a coordinating committee in the executive branch that is, uh, trying to identify, I believe, there's some federal funds that may come with this, um, but as I said, it's forty-nine hundred dollars apiece. Um, I imagine the courts, because we're not first responders, are the last on the list, they need to be, uh, given to the police and fire. Um, but all the radios that we have will, uh, except for maybe five, will no longer be operable or, or maintained by Motorola next year. It's a big-ticket item. Um, we ourselves, we're looking at other ways and avenues to try and, um, obtain the radios. We would need them for our field marshals and our field probation officers. Um, that's the only, um, method of communication we would have with, um, the police department, with fire, and the rest of the first responders. Um, so I just wanted to, again, be supportive, um, but just let you know that this is a big issue that I think will be, that government of Guam in its entirety will be faced with next year when Motorola ceases to support all of the current handheld radios that have been in use throughout the government, um, and everybody moves to this new platform.
Anybody have any questions? And I'll just ask a quick question. I'll ask a quick question. A member of the private sector came up to me and had witnessed a, an event where the police were involved, and this person was shocked when I explained to her that, whoa, when, when this person asked why the police did not have cellphones like everybody else. And I'm just wondering, between the two of you, at some point, whether or not there'd be a cost-benefit analysis as to whether or not we invest in five thousand dollar pieces of equipment, or whether or not we just figure out some way of addressing the old statute that prohibits the government from underwriting the cost of, of, um, cellphones, and that being the thing used, because this person was describing this incident where she was actually having to lend her cellphone to an officer who didn't have a cellphone to keep in contact with three or four other locations where there was something happening, and I'm just...
Uh, Senator, I know that, Vice Speaker, that, um, there's always, there's been in the past an experience of government of Guam cellphone use, and I believe, uh, you know, as we look forward, you know, again, in, in taking a look at, you know, communications and law enforcement, you know, the capacity both for public safety, because this isn't just GPD, also Fire Department or other public safety agencies, we certainly would look to explore, you know, the, uh, we've, I've talked even with Senator Tommy Morrison in terms of technology, you know, the, uh, the type of platforms that would be used in terms of communications. One of the most important issues to think about in, in those terms is encryption and a lot of the costs that would be associated with ensuring there's some encryption. Communication is vital, uh, and there have been cases too, the emergency responders, I, I know in other jurisdictions, uh, government issued cellphones too, and I think, uh, that's just something that, uh, we're, we're willing to explore too, in terms of, uh, part of the public safety team for this administration.
Uh, we're support, we've actually, uh, talked about this and vetted this, um, and we're definitely supportive of that. I think, uh, I mean, even looking at the push to talk, um, as, uh, as a good option within the court premises, but the reason why you would still need some of these radios is for, you know, all of the operations that require more than just two people communicating. Uh, it could be at the scene, you know, we had a, a tragic situation last month where somebody took their life when they were, um, when they were, um, when, uh, marshals went to go execute a search, uh, a, a arrest, a warrant of arrest, and that required, uh, communication between, um, the marshals and the police at the same time, and the first responders and the fire, and, um, I don't, you know, when multiple people, when you have an operating base that, uh, is there to, uh, to manage also a crisis, you need these kinds of radios to operate. I think what you're suggesting certainly, um, has merit for certain things, but at a certain level, with joint operations, um, it comes in handy. Uh, you know, I'll be honest with you, we're trying our best to try and figure out ways to reduce the number of radios we actually need. Not everybody needs one, but certainly when they're out in the field or if they're conducting joint exercises, I think...
I'm not, I'm not suggesting anything. I'm just relaying a comment by some, someone in the business community whose, whose opinion I, I value greatly, and whose insight I thought I might share, and if, if I just toss it out there, and if you've taught, thought about it, and there's a reason for it, then great, I now have a better response than there was, there were abuses in the past, and we canceled all government-paid cellphones, um, because that person was not satisfied by the answer that I gave, but if there is a better answer, I would appreciate it, as, as long as you guys have thought about it, and then I don't have to, to entertain that, that question any further. Okay? So, thank you. Next bill is Bill number fifty, introduced by Senator Ruschfischer. I'll allow the sponsor to make his short opening statement, if he wishes.
Yeah, thank, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Vice Speaker, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this bill is an act to amend certain sections of the code relative to annuity payments of certified, registered, or licensed healthcare professionals or ancillary service personnel employed by the judiciary of Guam, and I want to say that this bill is being introduced at the request of the judiciary, and I want to recognize, um, their oversight, Chair Senator Frank Uggan for, um, allowing me to introduce this bill, uh, on their behalf. And what the judiciary is seeking here, Mr. Chairman and colleagues, is exemptions that are already provided in statute for similar healthcare professional and ancillary service positions at the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, and the Department of Public Health and Social Services that lifts that prohibition on employee retirees, employing retirees for these positions, and if we do this, and hopefully we will, and it becomes law, that this would, uh, continue on the support the legislature continues to provide for the judiciary, uh, in its ability to provide for this therapeutic jurisprudence, and so I'm, I'm grateful that you introduced, um, that you had this bill publicly heard, and I've also provided, uh, a sponsor statement to that effect, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator. Uh, Mr. Tenorio.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker. I want to thank Senator Ruschfischer for introducing the bill, Bill fifty, and so if you, I would like to read my testimony into the record. It does cover some, some salient points I want to make. This legislation will add the judiciary to the list of government agencies currently authorized to employ retired, certified, registered, or licensed healthcare professionals and ancillary service personnel. In the judiciary, these licensed professionals would exclusively be assigned to the Client Services and Family Counseling Division. The Client Services and Family Counseling Division provides a variety of direct therapeutic, psychological, evaluative, consult, uh, consultative, and educational services to the court, its clientele, and the community. These services include forensic and psychological evaluations, individual couples, conciliation, and family counseling, group counseling, and in-house consultation and counseling, including to law enforcement personnel when necessary. The division is currently staffed by eight full-time licensed individual marriage and family therapists, or IMFTs. In the past, the division also employed one full-time psychologist. The judiciary is undergoing a system-wide revamp of its strategies for juvenile justice, adult probation services, therapeutic court programs, and case management. We are in the process of acquiring validated risk and needs assessment tools to improve the assignment of risk levels to criminal defendants, earlier identification of mental health and substance abuse issues, and evaluation of socialization factors that will reduce recidivism. We are in a transition to quality individualized case management in an effort to reduce and address recidivist behavior. This involves the evaluation and screening of juvenile and adult defendants, providing effective services and focused referrals, and reducing the over-supervision of low-risk defendants. We are also revising our strategies in treating crime victims, domestic violence offenders, as well as the management of sex offenders. This work involves acquiring new programs, investments in training probation officers, and therapists for motivational interviewing and validating assessments, regular and structured evaluation of program outcomes, and quality assurance and review of case management plans and supervision strategies. These evidence-based practices will improve probation services, the responsiveness of referral services for behavioral health, substance abuse, and developmental disabilities, and will significantly reduce recidivism. The Client Services and Family Counseling Division is an integral component in the development and implementation of these changes. The pool of qualified licensed healthcare professionals such as therapists available to the judiciary is quite often shared across the government of Guam. Indeed, the last recruitment process undertaken by the Client Services and Family Counseling Division resulted in the hiring away of the psychiatric social, social work supervisor from the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. Our goal is to utilize the flexibility contemplated by Bill fifty to bridge gaps between the retirement of highly skilled members of our professional healthcare workforce and the completion of, of comprehensive recruitment process that results in the hiring of competent and similarly skilled and experienced successors to those positions. This flexibility is something the judiciary only intends to utilize on an interim basis when it will improve effectiveness. Planning for succession is a priority for the judiciary, and we have developed a talent management program to assist us in this regard. Um, and before I close, you know, the reality is that out of the staff of eight, I have three, uh, senior individual marriage and family counseling therapists. Um, one is going to, is scheduled to complete her thirty-six-year service in June, um, with the, uh, the other two following shortly thereafter, and I think what our concern is, um, several, not all of them, but, uh, several of these senior therapists are the ones leading the efforts, uh, to implement these system changes. I don't think, I've not heard, um, any desire for any of these, um, therapists to have indefinite employment at the judiciary. Um, in fact, if I'm able to use this to convince one of them to at least stay six months to a year, uh, while we finish training staff and while we finish our, uh, execution of, um, uh, acquiring the, and implementing the risk and needs assessments, then I'm gonna be, uh, I'm gonna feel much better about our success. There's a chance, of course, that they may not, uh, you know, a lot of people that have lots of government years of service, they're able to go into private practice and do other things, but, um, this at least gives us a tool to try and convince them, um, you know, to at least have a managed transition and let us finish certain kinds of work. It's not meant to, uh, you know, establish a good secondary workforce, I don't think, and, um, and that, I'd just like to, um, thank you for your favorable, uh, consideration of this bill, and I have any, any questions you'd like to ask, I'm open to answering them.
Uh, thank you, um, thank you, Mr. Tenorio. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, before, excuse, uh, Mr. Tenorio, can you just, um, relay to the committee for the record, uh, conversation that the chief justice had with the chairman of the retirement fund?
Sure, of course, you know, in any kind of, what we've done is, uh, we've went and we've spoken to the, to Mr., to Chairman Sin Augustin to explain the situation, actually seeking support, actually more seeking that he doesn't oppose the legislation, right, in this regard, and he's, he, um, according to the chief justice, he indicated his support. He felt that it was equitable, given the fact that the same exemption exists elsewhere, and that it's really the same, uh, pool of people we're talking about.
Thank you, and that was important to, um, to, to point out, uh, as part of this public hearing process. Thank you.
You said you, this was gonna be in the interim. Would you have any objection to sunsetting this?
None.
And, and if you have a sunset provision on this, what would be a reasonable sunset provision?
I think that it would be three years, Mac. If you were to do it, I would think three years, and I'll tell you why. Um, you know, we've just selected the, um, the juvenile risk and needs assessment tool, um, and we're doing this with our consultants, as you know. Um, uh, we're working with, uh, Robert F. Kennedy National Resource Center for Juvenile Justice. Uh, so, uh, we've settled on the, the, the risk and needs assessment instrument for juveniles. It's not gonna be the same for adults. Adults, I think, will be able to, um, hopefully get to, um, I, you know, if I'm being ambitious, it'll be in the fall, but in reality, I think if we're gonna do a quality focus on juveniles, I would think the adult would follow, um, next year. I think also that, um, you know, in the interim, um, you know, there, in addition to those two things, um, adult and juvenile, the risk assessment, you know, I think we're looking at revamping the kind of therapy that we're doing in group sessions for domestic violence. Um, you know, Senator Ada, Tony Ada has been, uh, giving lots of, there's been lots of improvements in that area. There's some more evidence-based practices, I think, that, um, we've yet to acquire and implement in the domestic violence area, and also in the area of sex offender treatment. So, um, you know, in terms of priority, it's adult, it's juvenile, then adult, and then, um, you know, into the specialized ones, we'll try and do those concurrently, but I think reasonably, um, because there's so many balls in the air with the judiciary trying to do some major changes, I think three years might be a, a good compromise. It'll be reasonable enough. Uh, I'm not saying that we take the whole three years, but it would give us at least some time to, uh, move in case we want to reconsider certain practices.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Speaker. Just on that issue in regards to sunsetting, I, I understand the nature of what the judiciary of Guam is, is affected with right now in terms of being provided this flexibility, but why would you consider it an interim whether, when in fact it applies to a number of other government of Guam agencies? And with the judiciary, you've moved tremendously towards treatment courts, and in treatment courts, you always want that flexibility to be able to retain or to pull from individuals who have retired from the government of Guam and have that flexibility moving forward. Now, if the treatment courts were not a strong, uh, emphasis on the part of the judiciary of Guam, then I would understand about sunsetting provision, but why would you want to advocate for that?
Well, um, you know, really, I think that, um, my own observation is that in this field, um, the number of, um, licensed professionals is expanding. Um, I think that, um, that's in part due to, uh, some of the expansion of the scholarship programs that are available, um, you know, and the fact that, um, you know, the, uh, starting pays for these provisions in the Competitive Wage Act, uh, for new employees is attractive. Um, of course, um, people would argue that it should be more, but at least for entry level, as, as with the CWA implementation, um, entry-level positions or first-time employed after CWA implementation, there's significant, um, uh, pay increase. So, I do, I think, so, the, to answer to your question number one, I'm really, I would agree to it because, um, you know, I'm really concerned that, uh, we're not gonna be able to really pull off a quality, um, program implementation if I'm faced with, um, a departure of some of these senior therapists that are knowledgeable already of the court, that understand, uh, understand the, where we want to go, are familiar with, um, you know, the data that we're looking at. Um, and I, and I think, uh, I mentioned that we have a talent management program. Uh, we've been doing tremendous work trying to really pave the way, um, for our employees to, you know, expand their knowledge base and continue in, being employed at the court. So, I, I, I don't see it much of a threat. I, you know, people definitely would argue and would, you know, as much flexibility, you can make it, um, indefinite, um, but, you know, to be honest, uh, you know, this is not our primary mandate. The primary, primary mandate, of course, for behavioral health is with Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, but, you know, the Client Services was born out of the fact that, you know, honestly speaking, um, they've not been able to keep up with the demand, and the demand that's generated by the court is based on, uh, case times, you know, and it, it really needs to be reliable services. Um, and so I don't see this as, um, you know, I'd see it, you know, real, I have a more narrow focus on it, um, just because I want to, I think that the changes we're gonna be making in the next few years are going to be far lasting, and the way that we, um, and the way that, um, we're setting constant evaluation, I, I don't see us making radical changes. Uh, I think that there'll be, you know, uh, as time goes on, we will be making incremental changes, you know, and, you know, constant, and I, but, I mean, if we're gonna...
I'll just go with this comment. I, I think, Joshua, I understand your perspective, and I'm glad you, you highlighted that you're looking at it from a narrow perspective, at least at this point in time. It's just that with the impending opening of the Veterans Court...
Sure.
...uh, which is another treatment court, you always want if, some form of flexibility, and the intent, the way I look at it is, is the allowance to be able to recruit and to retain, or to retain, government retirees should always be considered as a program that would augment the existing workforce, not supplant. And that's how the program has been administered in many of the other government of Guam, Guam agencies, and I anticipate that judiciary of Guam, the primary focus would also be very similar to that, where anytime you have, you utilize this particular tool, it's to augment or provide that additional support, should the full-time staff not be able to meet that requirement at any point in time. So, I just wanted to, to share that because of the impending opening of the Veterans Court...
Sure.
...and that, that again is another treatment responsibility. So, thank you, Mr. Tenorio. Appreciate your comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The third bill we have on the agenda is Bill number fifty-three dash thirty-three, and I'll ask the sponsor to make an opening statement.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Bill fifty-two is an act to amend section eighty-one-one-three-B of chapter eighty, division four, to provide for entry into the classified service of the government of Guam for certain positions over at the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, and also is relative to retirement contributions by the, by GMH for short-term contractual hospital employees. Uh, section one of this legislation, Mr. Chairman and committee, um, members, is to, um, is to provide language that would allow, um, division heads from the Professional Support, um, Division of GMH into the classified service, just like the other, um, colleagues within the Professional Support Division. Um, I understand that there was, um, some disagreements between the HR department and, and some of the, um, the employees who are part, who are on these positions, and so, um, what this, um, legislation does is attempt to, to resolve those, those disagreements. However, after, um, receiving some information from GMH today, and the clarification that I had requested, um, it, it's apparent that amendments need to be made to this, and I look forward to working closely with your committee, um, to make these amendments as it's reported out. So, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We have several individuals. Ms. Ogo, Ms. Kamendi, Mr. Boyd, Mr. Greening, and Ms. Santos. Why don't you slide up another chair, and let's all go sit together. We'll start with Ms. Ogo. I understand your boss.
Buenos. My name is Ali Shogo, uh, Chief of Rehabilitative Services at the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. I'd like to express my sincere appreciation, uh, to Chairman and Vice Speaker BJ Cruz, Senator Dennis Rodriguez for introducing the legislation, and fellow senators for holding this public hearing, and for introducing, um, Bill five-two dash three-three. Today, I represent the hard-working and dedicated staff within the Pro Support Division who wish to have this legislation passed. The main objective of this bill is to convert currently classified positions to classified within the Professional Support Division of GMH. These unclassified healthcare administrator positions are specifically Chief Pharmacist, Chief Respiratory Therapist, Chief, Chief of Radiology, Administrator Hospital Food Services, Administrator Laboratory Services, and Chief of Rehabilitative Services. These positions are the department heads within the Pro Support Division or the clinical support areas outside of nursing and medical staff departments. These allied health department supervisors are identified in the law as Associate Administrators for Clinical Operations and Medical Services at GMH, although we have no administrative roles or authorities outside our respective units and departments. We are working managers, managers who in addition to overseeing the daily operations of the department, provide direct patient care, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. The law, when it was first initiated, was with this sincere intent of attracting and recruiting licensed allied health professionals. The law, the law allowed for the above-step recruitment of personnel hired in these positions, and when they were hired in these positions, they were able to go direct... when they were hired in these positions, they were able to go directly to a pay grade of 10, step 10, without outside approval or justification. This law, although it seemed to be of use at that time it was implemented, seems no longer beneficial, as step 10 pay grades are no longer appealing or competitive in recruiting highly skilled licensed professionals. More importantly, however, the unclassified status of these positions has been more of a deterrent to hiring qualified personnel, as qualified applicants or staff are apprehensive in accepting these challenging, difficult-to-recruit positions, due to the fact that they are subject to scrutiny at all times, and without the protection of the Civil Service Commission. We have seen in the past, heads of these respective departments assume acting temporary roles, they do the best they can to maintain operations within departments, and then they are dismissed from service and active employment due to this unclassified status, leaving the departments without a formal leader for many years. Allied Health Department Supervisors are the only positions holding this unclassified status. Other department heads within the professional support division and other divisions holds classified status positions, social services administrator, all nursing unit supervisors, the human resources administrator, information technology administrator, facilities maintenance department heads, to name a few. All these positions all hold classified status positions. We are asking for equal consideration of becoming classified employees as those now currently possessed by our colleagues at the hospital. We feel that this is an important element in hiring of qualified licensed staff in difficult-to-recruit positions, as well as maintaining them, to provide leadership within the challenging clinical departments within the pro-support division. Consistency, stability, and continuity of high-quality care might be realized within our respective fields. A classified department head would be held accountable for their respective department's efficiency, productivity, program development, and quality of care. We recognize the value of the classified position in the government of Guam, and we will hold ourselves accountable to earning such benefits. The professional support department heads and their staff are dedicated, committed, and highly skilled licensed professionals, providing high-quality care. We promise to continue to commit ourselves to promoting excellence in care to the people of our island. We thank you for your support and consideration of passing Bill 52-33. See you tomorrow.
Thank you. Ms. Ogo, Ms. Kamindi? Make sure the red light's on.
Hafaday, Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz, and the members of the 33rd Guam Legislature. My name is Angela B. Kamindi, I'm a registered respiratory therapist and chief respiratory therapist at Guam Memorial Hospital. I'm here to provide testimony on, okay, on Bill Number 52-33. I am a local girl, born and raised here on Guam, I have an associate's degree as a registered respiratory therapist, I am also certified as a neonatal pediatric specialist, I have a BS in health service management. I have been employed at GMHA for 25 years, and I'm very proud to be part of this allied profession. The duties and the responsibilities of the chief respiratory therapist is quite challenging but exciting. If you've ever known anyone on life support, you've met a respiratory therapist. I'd like to continue with the responsibilities as the Director of the Respiratory Department, as well as assist my coworkers on the floor to do patient care, because even though I am the Director, I am first the respiratory therapist, and with your help, I can continue to do my job with some form of stability. I would like to become classified and focus on continuity of care for our great people of this island of Guam that we call home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Boyd?
Hafaday, Senators, thank you for taking the time out to listen to us today, and thank you, Senator Rodriguez, for sponsoring this bill. It's taken us a couple years to get to this point today, so, we cherish this opportunity to communicate our concerns. My name is Jason Boyd, I've been a pharmacist at GMH now for eight years. I spent the last three years as the acting department head of the pharmacy. Prior to me, there was an acting head for 10 years, otherwise, there's a very long history of people coming and going in this department. So now, for at least the last 13 years, the pharmacy department has been without a formal department head, and the pharmacy is a 24/7 department that does produce over a million medication doses per year. I have received pressure to take this position, as opposed to our HR continuing to search for a pharmacy department head via stateside recruitment agency. My only hesitation is the classification status of this position. So now, as I've been here for eight years, we are now going on our fourth CEO of the hospital, which, number one, does give me pause before accepting an unclassified position, and number two, emphasizes the need to establish a continuity of care and leadership in the allied health professional department heads, which classifying these positions will do. Also, just to reemphasize, allied health department heads are working managers, we are not spending our time doing administrative work or management work, and ultimately, we do understand the value of a government of Guam classified position, and we will hold ourselves accountable to earning those benefits and job security that does come with a government of Guam classified position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. Mr. Greening?
Thank you, Vice Speaker and Chairman B.J. Cruz, and Senator Rodriguez for sponsoring this bill, and members of the 33rd Guam Legislature. I'm here in support of this bill, as I am a registered radiology technologist and the Acting Chief of GMHA Radiology and Imaging Services Department. My name is Tom Greening, and I have worked at Guam Memorial Hospital since 1999. I have been asked to step up and step down to manage the department on three separate occasions. I'm now on my fourth time to manage the department. I have an associate's degree in radiology technology and a bachelor's degree in healthcare administration. I am what they call a working boss, which means I not only do, do I perform the many management duties, but I also take x-rays, or work in CT, or cover Interventional Radiology Department as needed. There is no school for this profession on Guam, and as such, we are dependent on recruiting from the U.S. mainland. Unfortunately, the recent HAY study resulted in new hires being offered less salary to work at GMHA. The latest applicants I have interviewed have turned us down and go elsewhere because of the lower salary. It is very hard to work, manage, and run the radiology department when the position is not classified, and the department managers are moved in and out like a revolving door. The lack of continuity and forward progress is hampered by the frequent changes in the department management. I am in support of this bill because I plan to continue to work and help the people on our island, and find it nearly impossible to do so, because the constant changing of the radiology department managers. For the sake of stability and continuity, the positions need to be classified. I would like to end by saying, not too long ago, some of you senators came to our hospital to meet with us, and as Senator Cruz pointed out, he was definitely interested and concerned with our hospital, because as he noted, him and some of his friends are getting at the age where they may need our services. Trust me, Senators, there will come a time when you will all need our services, and we will be there for you, I hope. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the committee, I thank all of you for your decades of service, except for the young man at the end there, eight years.
Almost a decade.
Oh, one, oh, I'm sorry, that's all right, there is one more. Ms. Santos?
Yes, Hafaday, Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz, Senator Dennis Rodriguez, and members of the 33rd Guam Legislature. My name is Amory Santos, I am acting administrator of laboratory services since June 2013. Before that, I have been the chemistry department supervisor since May of 1998, and I've been working at the hospital since August of 1990, and we had brought ourselves up to the plate of being supervisors when all the senior technologists had that early retirement thing that happened in the late 90s, and so, all the senior technologists were replaced by myself and my other colleagues, who, it was a competitive position at that time in the early 90s, but yet, fast forward to this past decade of 2000, I think there's a rare, a rare number of people who do take up clinical lab science or medical technology as we graduated from bachelor's of degree in medical technology. And most of us in the laboratory supervisors, we did take up this medical technology as a prerequisite to medicine, so, most of us were planning to proceed to medical school, but in one or the other personal reasons, we decided to just, you know, work as a med tech. And the last administrator that we had was in 1999, with Mr. Henry Fornes, and he unexpectedly died, you know, here on Guam, he was contracted from the mainland. So, when I first went on board in 1990, it was Lena McDonald, who was the administrator of the laboratory, and subsequently, there has not been any real administrator, we had Beverly Lee Brown, who stayed for like a two-year to three-year contract, and then Mr. Fornes for another two years, and it was unexpected that, you know, his death shortened his. So, after that, I guess we had Albert Gerasami for another two years, and then in 2003, Ms. Glendalin Pangilinen became the laboratory assistant, laboratory administrator. That is, in the lab, a classified position, so, nobody among ourselves, our colleagues who are very skilled and knowledgeable and qualified to be in the administrator position has never chose or decided to, they never decide to apply for the administrator position because it is unclassified, and also, the pay is not as high. So, as an assistant administrator, acting assistant administrator, Glendalin Pangilinen had led the lab from 2003 to 2011, I believe she left, and after that, John Takerow, and then now, a year, John just, you know, happened to be needed in the graveyard shift, because again, our medical technologists' positions are very hard to fill, so, they needed him in graveyard shift, so he's now the, back to his old shift supervisor. So, right now, as the acting lab assistant administrator, I am also half chemistry department supervisor, like my colleagues, they are working managers, working bosses. And the laboratory has seven departments, we have phlebotomy, urinalysis department, the blood bank, of course, the most popular American Red Cross blood bank, blood units that we always need, and hematology department, chemistry department, which I fully have supervised still, because I only have a technician that assists me, and I have a technologist, one licensed technologist, but she is leaving soon, she's a military, her husband's military dependent, and she'll be leaving early part of next year. And we have a microbiology department, our most senior will be retiring this September, so we have lost two microbiologists, and she is more senior than I, and I'd always ask her to take on the acting assistant administrator responsibility, but she says she'll decline, and so, you know, I guess I'm the only lucky one to, to be, to step up to the plate. And then the seventh section is histology department, and it's headed by a pathologist, and also in histology, we just have a technician who's an associate degree holder. For the major departments like blood bank, hematology, chemistry, and microbiology, we need licensed technologists, and apparently, there hasn't been any applicants in the laboratory for a medic, who has a medical technology degree. So far, we've hired phlebotomists, who are bachelor's of degree holders in biology and chemistry, and there's some nursing majors that are not licensed as nurses, but they are willing to work as phlebotomists, but these people are planning to go ahead further with their education and possibly medical school. So, right now, I am here to give testimony and full support of Bill Number 52-33, and I'd like to support my colleagues, and I thank you for listening to us, thank you.
Again, before I so rudely cut you off, I want to thank all of you for your years and years of service, and anybody who had questions? Well, I guess it's back to work for you guys, and again, thank you for your service, and thank you for providing the testimony, we'll get this bill out, all right? Thank you.
Thank you.
We stand adjourned.